Lewis County Fiscal Court is now in session.
Okay, we have Mr. Dr. Howard, Will Sinner here with us, Minister of Batesburg First Baptist Church here with us. He's going to pray for us and then I'll ask Sheriff Johnny Evans to lead us into the questions.
Thank you for having me. Heavenly Father, we're here this morning. We just, our eyes look unto the hills from whence cometh our help. And we know that we always need your help. And we pray that you would give divine help to each of these, if decisions are being made, each of these magistrates, county judge, everyone that has a part, that as they try to serve this county, that you'll give them the wisdom and leadership and the courage they need to make tough decisions. Bless them today and bless Lewis County, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, start out, and we'll have Clerk Colrow.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Here.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Here.
First thing on our agenda is approval of minutes from the regular meeting on February 12th.
I'll make a motion to approve some minutes from the February 12th meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Clerk Colrow.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a welcome of guests and any response from the public that we have at this time. Danny, did you want to go ahead and address the court?
I can. It looks like you're going to have an extended agenda today, so I'll try to keep this brief, but I've got some good information to share with you today. As of probably Business Day Friday this week, we will have probably in our possession five ambulances that are actually working, plus two chase vehicles, for $20,000. If someone would have told me that a year ago, I would have been shocked. But from the due diligence of our 911 director and our county judge and our board, we have worked extremely hard to get this done. We have one, I'm pretty sure, that's coming from King's Daughters, and they are going to stock the vehicle. And for those of you that don't realize how much it actually takes to stock a vehicle, it is several dollars. And that's a very generous donation from King's Daughters. And anybody that sees Phil Rogers in the community, he lives in Fire Brick, be sure and thank him, because he's been instrumental in doing that. Now, to give you an update further, back in January 30th, the board, we filed our paperwork for our CON. Ben and I was notified last week on the 6th that our paperwork is complete, everything's done, we don't have to send anything back in. It has to be contested for 30 days. Once that goes through, if it is contested, then we have to have a hearing. But I feel like with all the information that we have given the OIG, that we're not going to have a problem getting our certificate of need. So we look forward to, once again, having a certificate of need in Lewis County. And we, as a board, have made the promise that once we get the certificate of need, then it's going to stay with the fiscal court in Lewis County. We don't want to have to go through this process again, because, believe me, and Ben can tell you, it's been a right smart process to go through. And we've had a lot of help from the state agencies, our representatives and our senators, and people from the governor's office that have supported us, along with K-beams. So it has been a pretty big challenge and a pretty big group of people working on something that is very important. So now, we're to the point where we are vetting candidates for EMS director. And once we vet our candidates for EMS director, then they will start to hire people. We are getting closer to providing a service for Lewis County. I will not give you a start date yet, because we're not sure of a start date yet. We know you still have a contract with Portsmouth, and as far as I'm concerned, right now, they're honoring that agreement. When they don't, then we'll try to do something different. But as of right now, you know, that's where we stand. And if anybody else would like to know anything else that I can possibly tell you, if I can answer it, I'll be glad to answer it.
Well, you've given us a really good overview, and I appreciate all your hard work, day after day. You've really been committed.
But it's been a joint effort, it really has. But the main challenges we have is when you build this service from the ground up, you just don't realize how much you have to go through in order to do it. Just about time you get one thing done, then you have three other things hitting you. You know, we've already approved our MCA. MCA is our third-party biller. That's already been taken care of. We've already met with them. They're already in the process of getting everything in the works. We've got that out of the way. And that's a big deal, because, you know, when we do start the service, we want that money to flow. You know, it's going to take the extra revenue. We're starting to put a budget together. We want to run two crews every day. We're looking at a million-dollar budget, at least. That's what it's going to take. And we know what's ahead of us. And we've got them, that's the reason why we went out and tried to secure all these vehicles to keep them happy to pay for them. Next big thing is going to try to secure a location, and that's on my agenda this week. We've got to nail that down.
Danny, just a quick question. Has the board secured a medical director?
We're working on that now. We thought we had one, and he turned it down.
Okay.
So it's just a process where it has, they have to have the emergency room credentials. And that knocks out a lot of people. And so I may have to go outside of this area to get one, which I know a good friend of mine that does that. It'll just be a question if he wants to do it or not. But we've got to have somebody that has that background in emergency room experience, as far as being an MD. Not just everybody can do that.
Yep. Appreciate that, and appreciate you all's efforts. I know a lot of folks have been working really hard on this, so glad to hear some progress is being made.
Well, we know what the value of the service is going to be, and we feel like that this service can grow. Now, how much it'll grow, I don't know. But we know that a lot of times that our people are taken by vehicle instead of waiting on an ambulance. And if we start that, when we get this service started, we want to eliminate that. We want everybody to feel like, like we said from day one, we want everybody to feel like they can have this service here, doesn't matter where you live in the county. Everybody deserves it. It doesn't matter if it's where I live, or where each and every one of you all live. You all represent all the districts in the county, and they deserve just as much of support as anybody else does. And we're going to do our best to do that.
Well, we appreciate you and the board and all the tough decisions you've made so far, and we appreciate that.
Well, hopefully next month, I'll come back with more good news. And hopefully, we will, this journey will take us a little farther. And I know the county's anxious to see this move forward. And thank you all for all your support, I really do. It's been a big undertaking. And I've said it, and I've told people in the community, it was real hard for three new magistrates and a new county judge to sell the idea of putting tax on tax people in their first term. And I appreciate you giving us and the board the support you did in order to do it. And I feel like they realize that how vital this service is.
Yeah. I agree. Well, thank you, Danny. We really appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your...
Okay, moving on to discussion of Buck Lick Branch Road, right?
That's what it looks like. Mr. McGinnis is back here today concerning Buck Lick Branch. Just to let the court know what I've done since the last fiscal court meeting, is for two weeks, I redoubled my efforts to see if there was any mention, or order, or resolution, or any minute notation, or right-of-way recorded in the county clerk's office concerning Buck Lick Branch. And the Buck Lick Branch I'm referring to is on Indian, not the Tolsburn Buck Lick Branch. There is nothing in any record in the county clerk's office that, where the court has issued its opinion as to whether Buck Lick Branch is a county road. Our county road inventory indicates that it is a county road up to some point, I think it's less than a mile. Mr. McGinnis provided us several maps, and I think we looked at those a little bit last week. Even those maps are inconsistent with each other. As the years progress, the road gets smaller, in some cases enlarges, and then gets smaller again. So as it stands now, according to Kentucky law, that is not a county road, because the fiscal court has not passed a resolution or order making it so. What I suggest to the court to do is to proceed as if we're adopting a new county road by appointing two viewers to issue their report, along with the county road foreman, to come back and state what they believe is or was the county road, how far it extends, and those types of things. As you're aware, there's two procedures for establishing a road. One is just by resolution, the other is by appointing a viewers. I think for the court to keep itself out of litigation, I would prefer there to be viewers and a report be issued, so that the court is making an informed decision as to what to do or what not to do concerning Buck Lick. And Stephen, does that sound...
Yeah.
Okay.
I absolutely agree with you.
Okay.
We've already got litigation. We don't want you in our litigation.
Thank you, man.
But the viewer, the viewers are going to look at what Stephen has provided. They're going to go physically look at the road. They can talk to landowners there. So I think the court's going to be able to make an informed decision when that report is issued.
Ben, just a quick question. If we were to adopt that in, can we adopt it in without maintenance?
You can.
We're basically providing access for neighboring properties, right?
Right. So, yes, you can. As you're aware, I think we've done in road closures before, we've said we're not maintaining it. It's to stay open for the purpose of private party access. We always do that when we close a road. If this road was closed, and at some point, a portion of it was closed at one point, I'm sure that's what the court's intentions were, was to keep it open for private party access, but that unfortunately isn't memorialized in any document.
How many more of these do we have that's not documented?
I'm sure there's a lot, and...
I mean, I'm just thinking, we opened up a big can of worms here.
It's not an issue until it is an issue, is the best I can say. And this is an issue. So, I don't know. I suspect there are quite a few roads that are in the same boat. They're official until they're not.
So how long would it be? If you get two viewers to go, 30-day process?
I would hope so. I hope so. Sometimes they take longer than others.
So your suggestion is that we table it until the next court meeting, and then bring it back?
Well, I think what I would ask the court to do, it's totally up to you, is to authorize the judge to appoint two viewers to issue a report. Then we come back and look at the report and talk to the road supervisor about it, and go from there.
I'll make a motion that we appoint the judge to appoint two viewers to view Buck Lick, start this process. I mean, at a minimum, we've got to make an informed decision. So all the information that we can obtain, we need to get.
Yeah. And the magistrates are free to view it themselves, too. So, you know, that can take part in your making a decision, is to view in it yourself. But the viewers, you know, you're giving them an opportunity to take more steps, to talk to landowners, to talk to the county road foreman, maybe kind of dig in a little bit deeper than what you could.
Could you email or provide us what's proposed?
I don't know that anything's really proposed at this time, because it's so confusing, and the maps are differing. So I don't know that there's necessarily anything proposed. I just want to see what viewers are saying they believe where the road is located, or how far it extends. I'll certainly convey to the magistrates what the parties to the lawsuit believe where the road is. That may be helpful.
Yeah, so we have something to go off on.
Okay, so we got a motion for Mark. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Joey. Any further discussion? Okay, Clerk Colrow.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
So those viewers will issue the report, hopefully, for the next fiscal court meeting. And Stephen, I've got your maps here. If you want them, they're here. But otherwise, I'll keep them safe for you.
Thank you all. Congratulations on your ambulance service.
You're welcome.
You all will not regret that.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a discussion of holiday pay. We tabled this last month. So really, we haven't come up with any other new information, other than we are going by the state's workforce laws, right, Ben?
I think what we're doing is pretty consistent with what other counties are doing. There are a few exceptions, but, you know, it's just a rare circumstance when this comes into play, that it's hard to game out every scenario.
Yep.
I can say confidently that other counties are doing the same thing we're doing.
Okay.
Without us changing anything, as it stands today.
Right.
So, I mean, other than that, you know, I know that it's tough times with the economy and stuff, and, you know, we are, we're looking into, you know, working on our next budget. We're going to be looking into seeing what we can do to help our employees out a little bit more this year.
With this discussion in regards to how we're paying on holidays, we're in the discussion of how to pay people if they have to come in on holiday. Because I thought it was the latter. I thought it was, this was...
When they come in on a holiday.
Yeah. And currently, what are we doing on that county? If they come in, Martin Luther King Day is the best example.
That was it. They got paid for eight holiday plus eight straight time. So they actually worked 12 hours, so they only got paid four hours of the overtime.
Which is time and a half.
Which is time and a half. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
They just didn't get the 12 hours of time and a half. They got the straight time. They did get paid.
There was compensation for coming in on that day.
Yes. Yeah, they still get paid, plus the holiday pay.
That's where I thought I had some kind of confusion, or not thought it was...
They actually, they actually got double time instead of double time and a half. The double time and a half's what they were wanting. Well, I've worked three or four different places, and they pay different. And Brown and Joey and me worked at, anything over eight hours was time and a half. Then I've worked at another job, you had the 40 hours before you got time and a half.
Yeah.
But I might get myself in trouble, but I'd make a motion just to leave it like paid, like what we have been.
Well, we did look at it, you know, and there's, you know, there's just a lot of rules on there. You can't do bonuses, and, you know, you can't count vacation time, comp time, or anything like that. It's overtime. It has to be worked in order for it to be... Those are just rules that we can't figure out any way to change legally, so...
I can tell you what Oldham County does, and I think George and I looked at this one. I don't think it's any better than what we have. But their policy says, "When it's essential for an employee to work on a declared holiday, the employee shall be permitted to take the holiday at a later date with supervisor's approval."
I like that.
"Employees will be compensated at straight time for actual time worked." So you're not getting the time and a half, you're getting the straight time, but you get a day, that day off at some other time.
That's kind of what I was leaning to, because I kind of got to thinking of the overtime rules, and I get that. So I understand all that. I guess my main concern would be, like when at Martin Luther King Day, what's the expectation of the road department coming in and clearing roads on Martin Luther King Day?
Yeah.
Was there one, was there not one? Did they do it out of kindness of their heart? Did some of them come in, not all of them? You know, I think through discussions, you say that's Moose's call. So if Moose made that decision, right. But if Moose said, nah, I think it's going to warm up and be okay, I don't think Moose would do that. Just for an example, it sets as it is with snow on the roads, on a holiday.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the state highway does tell their employees, like this county, Oldham County, that if they want to take that day off, instead of being paid that straight time, and I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that.
No, I don't either. That's just, that's kind of where we hit, because we was, you know, checking school facilities. And it's just very obvious that if our state is out and county is not, it doesn't look good. I mean, it's just as simple as it is.
But I mean, there's nothing wrong. If they had to work that day, and, you know, that day was important to them to be off, then, you know, they would get paid straight time for that day they were working, and they could take off eight hours. They could take the next day off, or they could take Friday off.
That's what I think is at least, I think we should do that for the at least for... Now, I think it might have to be typed up or something and presented a little more formal than just reading it, Ben. I don't know, but...
Anything over, like...
The 40.
Forty.
But the holiday eight hours doesn't count toward your 40.
It don't count. They actually have to work that day.
So technically, if they came in on Martin Luther King Day and worked eight hours, and then worked Tuesday through Friday, eight hours, they're still only getting 40, even though they're paid for 48.
That's correct.
But the eight overtime is only straight, because holiday pay doesn't count in as time served.
Yes.
Time working, yeah.
Like, so labor law, you have to work that day before work the day after.
I got you.
Before they work that holiday.
Yep.
And, you know, I do all the overtime, you know, look at a lot of the overtime, so I'm kind of familiar with all that, which then it clicked when I said that. But at the same time, you know, if Moose hadn't went out on Monday and cleared, I mean, we could have, we could have got in trouble pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah.
On our county roads, because it was cold and they would have got compacted, is what I'm saying. So I think, I know by law, we can do that, but if the law also allows us to allow them to do that, and get paid their straight time and their holiday time, and then receive time off somewhere down the road, because technically, they didn't get any time off that week, when they should have gotten time off.
They got for Monday, yeah.
I'd say so. Do we need something more official on that, Ben? Or are we... And I think we're in a good shape right now, right, because we don't have a lot of holidays that don't like come up.
I mean, I can do a resolution for the next meeting, doing that if that's what you want me to do.
I don't know if that's the technical term, but it's kind of what it sounds like. You basically get to just take that time on a Friday, when it's beautiful and things aren't really going that south.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if you need a motion for us...
So if they come in and worked on that holiday, they're getting paid straight time?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
They did this, but they're also getting credit for that holiday?
Yes.
So for those first eight hours, it was double time, basically. So they're being compensated the same either way. It's the same thing, whether you compensate for those eight hours, or provide a floating holiday to be used later on.
They're not losing anything.
That's, yeah.
Right.
And I think they feel like they are, but they're not losing anything.
I'm saying, do it, pay the straight time, and then in addition to that, have the floating holiday. I think it's going to happen one time maybe a year. I mean, one or two times, tops, maybe a year.
Yeah, I think we've only had...
But the kicker for me to say, why go above, is because they might have had something planned with their family that they've had to sacrifice to be able to come in and work. And I think they should then get that back to them at some other point for that sacrifice. And some of them may not have, but who are we to dictate what they had planned or not had planned?
Can we do that legally?
Oh, is Oldham paying their straight time plus a floating? Because that's how I thought you said it.
Yes, I think that's right. "When it's essential for an employee to work on a declared holiday..."
Martin Luther King Day.
"...the employee shall be permitted to take the holiday at a later date with supervisor's approval. Employees will be compensated at straight time for actual time worked."
Just like we do now, but you're just going to let them take. We're not going to pay them that eight hours for that holiday. They'll get it later.
Yeah. Well, if we do, if we do this, I don't give them an option to have a full day off, you know, if...
I understand, because I'm...
Yeah.
I think that's right.
Okay, all right.
I understand, I think, what Mark's saying is it works the same, other than the fact that this way, they actually, they're getting paid the same, but they're getting the time off plus the pay the same.
No, because if they work that holiday, if they work that holiday, they're getting straight time for that time worked.
Yes. But that's the point of coming in on a holiday, the sacrifice they're paying. Point of coming in on a holiday, the sacrifice they're paying is that.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's either pay them double for that day or pay them straight time for that day and give them a floating holiday.
Yeah.
It works, the numbers work out the same, but you're right. It does give them more flexibility in their schedule and I don't have a problem with that.
Well, we don't have that in our policy right now, right?
The Oldham County option is not in the policy.
So.
It's, it's the double.
I don't think we made a decision on it today, but I think it's a good discussion. And so, there was a motion on the floor to keep it the same. I, I make a motion to go back and have that drafted based upon Oldham County's policy and re, re-look at it.
Yeah, well, I, I like that option too, and I think David likes that option and. Yeah.
And that would be to the county's advantage to spread it out. That's right, it's the same.
So, would you all like to go ahead and, and let Ben write that up and present it in our next meeting? So, we just kind of table it right now then and let him write up the resolution and then we'll, we'll bring it before a vote.
I'll amend my motion to table it.
Table it, okay.
So, Johnny had a pending motion.
I always drove, withdraw my motion.
Okay. Withdraw yours.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you all for that and. So, we will revisit that on our next meeting, okay?
We need a second, we only got.
I'll second.
Okay. Woody and, and Mark, and any further discussion to table it, then Clerk Colwell.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. We're going to jump down to H on this and that is, I'm going to, one, I'm going to ask Anita if she wants to come up here and.
Thank you guys for amending the agenda a little bit for me. We have an open position on the Board of Health and it is the Fiscal Court Appointee. That has been Steve Applegate for many, many years, about 20-plus. He has done a good job, he has served the board well, but wishes to resign. And Kenneth's wife wants to travel. So, I need a Fiscal Court Appointee. I have asked Paula Mason to, if she is willing, to serve on the Board of Health and I just need the appointment from the Fiscal Court. The Board of Health has 12 members. There are three physicians, one ophthalmologist, one dentist, one veterinarian, one nurse, one pharmacist, a consumer, one engineer, and then the Fiscal Court Appointee. The Judge Exec is an in-facto member. So, if you all could fill that for me, I would greatly appreciate it.
I recommend that, and I'll make a motion to appoint Paula Mason onto the Lewis County Board of Health.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Moving on, Lewis County Sheriff, Unmined Mineral Tax Settlement 2022.
In your packet is a settlement for the 2022 unmined mineral, and we just have one. The, this bill is generated from Frankfurt, from the Department of Revenue through the Property Evaluation Office. For some reason, for 2022 tax season, they did not get this bill to me in a timely manner. I did not receive the bill until May, collected the funds in June of 2023. And they are asking me to present this settlement to you so they can get it off of their records. But it'll still be in my settlement this spring for the 2023 taxes because that is when I collected the money. But no funds are needed to be dispersed because those have all already been dispersed to all the taxing districts. This is just a formality for Frankfurt.
I make a motion to approve the 22 unmined mineral tax settlement.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion Woody, second Mark, any further discussion? And Clerk Colwell.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Next is our Lewis County Clerk's 2023 Fee Settlement.
I make a motion to accept Lewis County Clerk's 2023 Fee Settlement.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody and a second from Joey, any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
In your packet next, we have Rural Lawn Service Agreement 2024.
Make the motion to approve the $400 seasonal contract with Rural Lawn Service.
Question, is this what it was last year?
Yes, that is.
Same thing. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion from Woody, second by Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Next is Acknowledgement Presentation of the 2024-25 Jail Budget.
Just verification, this transfers in $550,000, that's from Fiscal Court, right?
That is correct, yes. Of our general fund.
How does that compare?
Same as last year.
Same.
That, there is a little bit different. I think last year, we was at, I want to say 643,700. This year, we're at 643,400. But the same amount is contributed out of our general fund is the 550,000.
So, this budget permits prisoner contract, is that with how many different facilities?
You got Mason County, Greenup County, Montgomery County, and Round County.
And do we know that those are going to stay the same or?
We do.
How, what's the terms of those agreements?
We renew them yearly.
We just did Mason's, didn't we?
Yeah. But we renew them yearly. I'll have to look and see when they come up.
So, they're on different schedules?
They are on different schedules.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the 24-25 jail budget.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody, second from Johnny, any further discussion?
Yeah, if I could ask Penny, can you estimate what the total jail buzz, budget was when there was a detention center here? If you can just.
It's over, it was over a million dollars.
Okay, okay, that's all.
With everything. I can't give you, I want to say maybe a million and three-something roughly, but it was, I do know it was over a million dollars.
Okay.
At that time, were the receipts about the same as what they are now?
Um, no, because you had more receipts coming in because you had Class D and all that stuff coming in. Now, we don't have that. You still had the same about transferring in, but you had Class D where we got paid for Class D. So, we had a lot more as far as Class D coming in.
So, transfers in is about the same as what it was?
It is last year. When the jail was operational, it was up to about 600,000. It was a little bit more.
Okay.
One year, we went to 750,000 and still had that million-dollar budget. That's when they kind of start cutting our Class Ds back. So, at that time, that's rough numbers, so.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes. Okay. Next is Resolution Number 24-07, Crumb Rubber Grant.
Crumb Rubber Tire Derived Products Grant, Lewis County Fiscal Court Resolution Number 24-07. Whereas Lewis County Fiscal Court proposes to develop recreational resources to provide for the health and well-being of the general public. And whereas Lewis County Fiscal Court intends to make application to the Division of Waste Management for assistance under the Waste Tire Market Development Program. And whereas the Crumb Rubber Tire Derived Products Grant is limited to funding a maximum of 75% of proposed projects. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Lewis County Fiscal Court hold and reserve 25% of the proposed project costs for the purpose of matching the Waste Tire Market Development Program. And be it further resolved that in the event a grant is awarded, Lewis County Fiscal Court hold and reserve 25% of the proposed project costs for the purpose of matching the Waste Tire Market Development Program. And that in the event a grant is awarded, the county understands that it will sign assurances to comply with all applicable federal and state laws, rules and regulations, especially Title VI of the Civil Rights Act and Section 504 of the 1973 Rehabilitation Act.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2407.
Second it.
Okay, Mark and Woody, any further discussion? And Clerk Colwell on that part of it.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay, the next is the Resolution Number 24-08, LWFC Grant.
Land and Water Conservation Fund 2024 Grant Application Resolution Number 24-08. Whereas Lewis County Fiscal Court proposes to acquire, develop, renovate recreational resources to provide for the health and well-being of the general public. And whereas Lewis County Fiscal Court intends to make application to the Department for Local Government for assistance under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 1965. And whereas the Land and Water Conservation Fund is limited to funding a maximum of 50% of proposed project cost. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Lewis County Fiscal Court hold and reserve 50% of the proposed project costs for the purpose of matching the Land and Water Conservation Fund assistance. And be it, there, be it further resolved that in the event a grant is rewarded, Lewis County Fiscal Court understands that it will sign assurances to comply with all applicable federal and state laws, rules and regulations, especially Title VI of the Civil Rights Act and Section 504 of the 1973 Rehabilitation Act.
What's this, I know this was, the crumb rubber was going to be, I think, for benches.
Correct.
What is it, what is this one for exactly?
The, the crumb rubber is for benches and, and tables at various parks in the county. And this LWCF is for the, the rec park in Black Oak. And it is for $250,000 and it's for the ball fields. And it's a 50% match and we're planning to apply at the same time for House Bill 9 funds for the matching funds for this. We apply for both of them at the same time, Buffalo Trace will, and, and let each of them know that we're applying for the other one.
So, what was that estimate?
Well, the LWCF is for 250,000, is the maximum on that right now.
It's a 125 match unless the other grant comes in as the match.
The other grant, yeah, will be for 250,000 matching funds.
What's the deadline on this one?
The deadline on them, I'm not exactly sure. We've still got a little bit of time on it, I think.
I mean, it's a pretty good assurances that probably nobody would know if it's a competitive grant, I'm sure.
Right, right.
I guess, is there a scenario where we would get the one grant but not the other and have to match the 50?
The 50%?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we talked to Todd about this and, and other, other people, Buffalo Trace as well. And what they're going to do is they're going to apply for both of them at the same time and let each other know that, that we're doing that for the match. Because, you know, the county doesn't have the match. So, that's what the House Bill 9 is for and so, we're going to try to get it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2408.
Okay, Mark and Joey, any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes. Okay, next G is Engineering Work Order Agreement for the ball fields and concession stand at the recreational park in Black Oak.
And just, just a clarification, this is just for a cost estimation, right?
Correct.
Did you have anything on that, Ben?
No.
This, Missy says for the ball fields and concession stands, an estimate.
Yeah, it is for bank engineering to complete a detailed budget for the ball fields, one regulation baseball field, one regulation softball field, two little league fields, as well as a concession stand in the center of the four fields for the Black Oak Recreational Park.
That's not to exceed 5,000?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second? Joey, Mark and Joey, any further discussion?
Yeah, just one, one thing. A lot of times, when you get into dealing with engineers and architects, they, they need to design something with the end number in mind. Don't design a $500,000 or a million-dollar facility based upon $250,000 and show you that picture. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, whoever talks to these folks, let them know, here's the end game number. And is it the 250, I'm assuming, that we just applied for? Because I thought we said that was for ball fields.
The, what we're applying for is, is for work on this project. This, this 250 with the 250 match is not going to do probably all that.
That's what I'm saying. So, do we have the number that we want them to go by? Because they might bring us back a $10 million facility. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
I've done this song and dance a bunch too.
Yeah.
And you say, my number is 300,000 and they come back with 425. I don't know why they can't figure it out, but they can't, so. So, do we know what the number is, the end game number?
Yeah. Our hopes were we could apply for more than that, but, you know, that's, that's just what the LWCF is and the House Bill 9 allows you to apply for that.
But do we have an end game number for what you just said you're going to ask them to do? Build us, design us four fields and concession stand based upon a million dollars? Or design us four fields? I mean, is that, and I know, I know I'm being whatever. That's going to be grass and brick dust? Or are they going to design turf and brick dust? You kind of get what I'm saying? Do they know that you're game?
They're working at the direction of the recreational board.
Yeah.
So, let's convey that to Missy, I think she's the one that's going to be talking to them. So, we'll say on this phase, we want designs for this particular phase, not anything more, right? That's what you're.
Not just the design on the phase, which maybe I need to talk to Jack or somebody on this, you know, which is easily accessible.
Missy has the quote for the softball field out there. I gave that to her. Well, Trace Creek gave me the quote for the softball fields count and the fields, the bleachers, the dugouts and the scoreboard. So, she does have that money amount. We did bring that to the recreational park board meeting, does have that number that they are aware of that it took just for the softball field out to the high school. So, that number, they do have.
Oh, we don't want the softball field at the high school to be the standard.
But that was, nobody had a quote.
Yeah, I got you.
Does that make sense? So, to throw out a number to the recreational park board, we went to Trace Creek to get that number.
So, this company is going to give us cost estimates to build it. But they have no end number in mind, okay?
To my knowledge.
Starting point.
Yeah.
I understand if we had them all.
You kind of get what I'm saying there?
Yeah, I mean, if we had them all like that one out there.
I'm just saying, I, I'm not against this or whatever, and I think it's going to be done. But how can they build a budget if they don't know what the end number is?
Well, I think they're going to have to get with the, with the rec park, I mean, committee.
Well, I make, I make a motion to move forward with the work order agreement. Maybe get them to report back out to us whenever they know the end game number.
Yeah, so.
Because ultimately, that number is, we're the ones paying the bill. Because ultimately that number is, we're the ones paying the bill on it.
Yeah, right.
That's correct, yes.
But this right here is just for the estimate to start with, right?
Yeah, it's just an estimate. You can adjust it once you get that.
You know, they might be able to say, you know, well, it's gonna cost this much, but we can get this much for that amount. And it might be two ball fields instead of four.
Yeah. I think they'll take it back to recreational park board and we might have to scale it back like Woody's saying or whatever with, at the end game, I'm not sure. But I know the board has requested to get some money amounts for that up there to see. Because they've tried to go to businesses and ask for donations and it's kinda hard to ask for donations when we don't know what that ball field's gonna cost. So that's the reason we kinda went to Trace Creek and we're kinda going this route with it. Is what the board has actually decided to do, so they can go to business for donation. If that kinda makes sense.
Motion stands.
Okay.
Okay, you've made the motion, Woody and Joey. Any further discussion? And Clerk Carrow.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Okay, next is, we'll skip H there because we've already done that. I hire Ray McClurg, full-time at Lewis County Road Department, pay rate twelve dollars per hour.
Make a motion.
Question. This is a replacement from a retirement, right? I'll second that motion if it hasn't been seconded.
Okay, Woody, Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Carrow.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Next, hire Maren Kahn, seasonal at Lewis County Solid Waste, pay twelve dollars per hour.
Make a motion to hire Maren. Second.
Okay, Johnny and Mark, any further discussion?
He's already on the job. I seen him this morning.
Okay, Clerk Carrow.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
He was so busy, he didn't have time to talk to me. Okay, hire James Sparks, full-time as janitorial, service pay rate of twenty-one thousand per year. And I will, Penny, I'll let you, if you don't mind, to describe to them how we plan to do this. I've talked to Mike about also doing security in the courthouse during fiscal court meetings and at other times.
Mike, I know Woody has remembered, James Sparks has been here before. We actually call him Mike. He's kinda been over the janitorial services before. Right now, we do only have Brenda, part-time. Debbie did quit. She did turn her notice in, so she is no longer here. Nicole has took over the work farm program. Mike did that in the past, so that would kinda go back as Mike as well to distribute it, distribute them out as well, whoever's on that work farm. He is also going to stay late to make sure all the doors is locked, lights is off. And then kinda just whatever we need. He will actually be split, he's gonna do, because he did before, anything over the Justice Center, like if they need a door handle or kinda anything over there, his pay will be split over there. We will get reimbursed for him, half over there and half here. He did lights, he did, he kinda was maintenance and janitorial is kinda what he was. We still have Charlie. Charlie comes in as we need him, but Mike would be here for full-time.
They'll cover half?
They will cover half, yes.
Are they in agreeance with their ten-five or whatever?
It is our call. Only thing that, he's already had background checked. The only thing I have to do with them, just like with Debbie, we have to do a background check. Other than that, that's it.
Has this number been discussed with Mike?
Yes, it has. He is okay with it. He's actually one coming in and talking to us about this position.
I make a motion to move forward with James, Mike.
Okay, so Woody made a motion.
I'll second that.
Mark, any further discussion? And Clerk Carrow.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay, next advertised to hire seasonal help at Lewis County Solid Waste. Litter abatement for trash pickup, pay rate twelve dollars per hour.
Make the motion.
I think you would like to have four, correct? Roger would like to have four, Judge, with that.
Okay.
This is financed through a grant, litter abatement grant?
Yeah.
That is correct. It's all through litter abatement grant.
We'd like to have four, so we got a motion from who?
Woody.
Woody, and a second from Joey.
I'll second.
Okay, Clerk Carrow.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes. Okay, I'm hiring Randy Thurman, full-time at Lewis County Workforce, pay rate thirty-two thousand. And I'd also, I'd like your approval to hire him and I'd like your approval that I can waive the probation period so that he can have insurance. He's been an employee for the city for fourteen years and he's got quite a bit of experience and a good worker and he'd be a good addition to our workforce.
This is also, in a roundabout way, a replacement from a retirement, from Rusty.
For.
From Rusty retiring and Roger moving to that position.
Yeah, he would, yeah, he would take Roger's position.
So we're not adding a position here?
No, we are.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hire Randy Thurman.
Okay.
What about the.
Without the.
Insurance.
Without the probation period? Yes, I'll add that to my motion.
Okay, so we got a motion from Mark.
I'll second.
Second from.
Joey.
Joey, any further discussion? Clerk Carrow.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Okay, discussion of internet and phone system with Spectrum. Larry Alexandra. Thank you, Larry, for coming up and talking to us today about this.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Just to kinda give you a little background of what we've got going on. The courthouse here in this building is currently powered by a company out of Lexington, Kentucky called Exact Communications. And they provide our internet service and phone service, our farwell service and all of that stuff for this particular building. This has to do with network and internet infrastructure here. I also fill in in my business as the hands and feet of fiscal court. And I go out and implement stuff that they might want done or something that the judge or the treasurer wants done within the county. Recently, we were approached with, from Spectrum Enterprise. Everybody is familiar with Spectrum. They're an internet service provider. They also have an enterprise level offering to businesses and to governments, education. And we're dealing basically with the education and the government side of this. What got them to come to us is that they're doing all the local governments, they just recently tied into the Board of Education here in Lewis County and providing all of their phone services and all of their internet services through fiber optic. I also believe, Judge, if I'm not mistaken, Spectrum is, have a grant to roll out fiber to the end user in Lewis County. And I'm familiar with all of that, but so, but they've approached us and wanted us to look at this. They're gonna, they wanna replace everything from Exact Communications, report all of our phone numbers, give us a service that is more than twice what we currently have. And let me explain to you what we currently have, because I think this is important for you to make an educated decision on this. We have, currently have internet service coming to the facility from Spectrum Business. It's a business level, not an enterprise level. It's run on coaxial cable. We have a current speed in here of five hundred megabytes down and thirty megabytes up. That's called a symmetrical speed setting. What Spectrum is proposing is a symmetrical, which is equal up and down on speeds of one thousand megabits on a fiber optic input. They're also having managed side for our farwell systems here. And they would be co-managing that with myself. And I think that that's their phone services. They're gonna give us new phones for our voice-over IP phone systems. Plus, they've also want to increase our speeds at waste management and the animal shelter, which currently doesn't have any internet there other than what we pipe across the parking lot through a point-to-point wireless. Also, out at the road department, they've proposed internet out there. Those speeds are running somewhere around three hundred megabits up and down. Is what they're proposing. Currently, at waste management, we have a very, very small pipe out there for internet. And they share that with animal shelter or animal control there and that's across the parking lot. The road department is currently powered from Windstream and it is very bad out there. I'm talking like ten megabits. It's just that bad. So this is more of a determination of what direction I guess the board, the fiscal court wants to go. But I think our contract with Exact Communications is currently grandfathered in, so I think we can make a move if the court here desires to do so. Is there any questions? Is there anything else I need to cover on that, Penny? I think I hit on everything.
I do have some kinda quotes for y'all, just comparison, sorry, what we are got now with Exact. So kinda what we got now, I know you mentioned it's coax, correct, Larry, correct me if I'm wrong with it. But our bill, this includes every, all the offices here, it includes the animal shelter, it includes solid waste. That bill with Exact right now is two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. With Spectrum, for a three-year term quote, we're looking at, for all the locations that I just named, we're looking at three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, sixty-nine cents, a difference of five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and nineteen cents. But you're talking about speed difference as well, you know, along with the money cost. Road department is a little bit different because it is on the Windstream bill. That bill right now is a hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. Spectrum has quoted five phones. I have talked to Moose. We do not think we need five phones out there. So that quote will come down, but the quote with Spectrum with the five phones is like three hundred and forty dollars and ninety-three cents. Difference of a hundred and fifty-four dollars. The startup cost for them to come in with the phones, get everything set up and everything, is six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for startup costs. That's a one-time fee.
Gentlemen, I just wanna make a note here of the fact that I do not have blood in this game, okay? I'm only here as an advisory, only just because of the, that I've worked for fiscal court for over twelve years. And so I'm just here in advisory role on this, but I would be involved in implementing the final installation on this.
What's the start to finish time? Thirty days, twenty days?
It really depends upon, if we call Spectrum tomorrow and said we're a go on this, we have, they have ninety days by the Public Service Commission from our previous company, which is Exact Communications, to release our phone numbers, okay? Phone numbers are controlled by the Public Service Commission out of Frankfurt, and so Exact Communication currently has control of those. But if we put in a change order, then they have an extended period of time, I think it's somewhere around ninety days, to report them to Spectrum. So it's just hard to say. I can't really answer your question, Johnny. So, but somewhere in that neighborhood of three to four months, I would tend to believe. So, plus, we haven't really looked at the engineering side of this for getting the fiber into downtown. It's in the area. We just put in a small order the other day for Trace Creek over here, I think. And they're getting some fiber and they're projecting at least a sixty-day pull-in over there for their fiber. One of the things, and I was talking to the Spectrum rep this today, he said, one of the benefits of putting the fiber here in, in this area is that the ability for them to roll out additional fiber to businesses in downtown into this area of Vanceburg greatly increases then. So if the government ties onto this, it allows them to already have stuff in the area that they would be able to do this. The fiber that they are proposing, but for the fiscal court, is something that is dedicated to us. We are not sharing that piece of fiber with anybody. And that's really important, because that gives us, it guarantees us a thousand megabits up and a thousand megabits down. It's a big deal, okay? I can go into technicals all day and give a dissertation on it. I'm not gonna do that. I'm just gonna let you go with it, so.
Exact, kinda when we changed over with it, Woody, I know you was here with it, it was kinda in Todd's time. With it, Exact's almost kinda like a third party. We still have Spectrum, if that makes sense. But Exact is like the third-party billing. They take care of all of, like, calling summer, you know, whatever summer is or go-to with Exact. And Larry deals with summer as well. So it's kinda, they're kinda like a third party is what they are. Is that correct? Is that?
Yeah, well, they're the porting company. They control all over the internet coming into this building. We pay a flat fee to them for voice-over IP, porting our phone numbers, managed farwell service, managed switch service. And that includes the leases on our phones. The proposal from Spectrum gives us all new phones. These are Cisco-grade equipment. They are Cisco. They're Cisco phones. They're top of the line of stuff. So, yeah, that about sums it up, Penny.
Larry, am I understanding correctly, there's gonna be fiber at nine-one-one, right?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Emergency management.
Yeah. Dennis, did you have any questions about this, Dennis? Or I know you fool with our computers a lot.
I think what we have at nine-one-one as far as the lines coming out is that the thing, I'm not even.
We can't do that.
The nine-one-one service that you currently, the nine-one-one center, I think is part, it's powered separately.
Yes.
Now, the office side of emergency management is powered from this building with a wireless point-to-point to that building over there.
It's just emergency management.
But I think the plan is to give them their own dedicated service over there, included in that. Is that the way you understood it, guys? No, just for the emergency management side.
Emergency management side, because I think.
Nine-one-one's really not included in that.
Nine-one-one's not, because they are kinda bound. We even talked to Spectrum about that and he was aware of it.
Okay, okay.
We've kinda bound with Windstream with nine-one-one. It would just be kinda emergency management side over there. And that's what they've quoted us, it's just emergency management side. And I have their book that they've left. You're all more than welcome to look at it. I've got it here, same thing. Larry's got as well. I can give it to you all to look at. They've got it broke down with this whole courthouse, but they've got animal shelter, they've got road department, they've got emergency management and solid waste. And that's where I got the numbers from that we talked about earlier.
Well, Larry, I don't wanna tie you up here and get off on another subject, but I know that we were given a grant. We were awarded a grant for our own server, right?
A few months ago, we had a grant application that I helped everybody write and put that in. And I think it was somewhere around eleven or twelve thousand dollars for a new server system. And when you say, well, gosh, Larry, what's the whole purpose of a server system? When we look at network integration within a facility like this, security is top of the line. That's stuff that we have to consider. There's too many people out there that have devious ideas about, well, let's take out Lewis County Fiscal Court today. Or whether it would be somebody local or even a foreign actor. There's a certain amount of liability involved with that from the fiscal court's position. The main thing is this, that you mitigate that as best you can so that it looks like that you've been able to at least make a good attempt at doing that. So one of the purposes of the server and the fiber and the managed farwells and all of that is putting up our defenses in what we call layered defenses. In other words, there's a layer here, there's a layer here, there's a layer here and another one. So each one of those is monitored and maintained and the server is part of that platform or that integrated layering system for security. Plus, it gives us options to be able to put individual departments with centralized document control so that we can maintain that in case of a natural disaster or something along that line. Not only do we have it on a server level and multiple hard drives, but we also would be able to have that clouded into a centralized area. I mean, we're already doing that with a few systems, but when we have another, we have a main server involved on, in the main building here, it helps us to better manage that for the individual departments, so.
Well, the reason I wanted you to talk about that a little bit, this whole thing, if we put it all together, it puts us in a whole different place.
Yes, it puts us to a whole different level game. Yes, it puts us to a whole different level game. And again, this is not, this is not something, this kind of, this kind of come out. I mean, this is not something that we planned. We've talked about a lot of stuff, and it's been baby steps. We have a pretty good platform with Exact Communications, but what Spectrum is offering us is a whole different level of service and a whole different level of speed. And it's coming. It's just a matter of whether we want to get on the train or not, so.
Spectrum actually approached us. We had a sales rep that actually come in and approached us. So, George and I had sat down with them and gave them some information, you know, what our current plan was, and they wanted to know if they could put a proposal together for us. So, that's kind of what we've kind of presented here today, is their proposal.
I have a couple of questions, and I agree we need to move forward. I mean, how, the system that's currently here is very antiquated, and I was really surprised by what is, what we don't have established. There's a few issues that come to mind. You know, we have the grant for Spectrum to provide broadband, fiber broadband throughout the county. Are we, are we double-dipping here? I mean, are we, are we purchasing something that's going to be maybe partially supplied eventually through that grant?
What that grant is supplying is more to residential. It's called, it's a type of fiber that's called G-PON fiber. In other words, they're going to run a piece of fiber down the street here, and then they're going to branch off with little individual pieces of fiber to individual houses. That fiber pipe, think of it as a water pipe, is a shared resource. The county is getting something that's totally different. We're getting a dedicated pipe from this facility right into their backbone at 1,000 megabits per second, whereas now we're just getting the 500 over 30. That's a shared resource. So, no, we're not, it's totally a different technology or service, you might say.
Now, this server that you're talking about, that I guess the grant was applied, had been, we've applied for, there's maintenance required with that, right?
Little bit, yeah.
A server isn't something you set up and it just runs, right?
That's correct.
Especially at the level of security that you're talking about.
Right.
Because of that, that constantly needs to be upgraded and maintained. Is that included in that purchase price, or is that going to be a separate?
That doesn't have anything to do with Spectrum at all.
What's that?
So, that doesn't have anything to do with Spectrum.
Okay.
That's something that we would manage locally. The way I work with the county is that I just work on a hourly basis. They call me, I come in, I fix things, I manage it. The only other issue that we have is that my company manages the cloud backup service, which is a managed service. A new server system that we put in here would have at least a three-year warranty on it. I generally don't have any issues with server platforms, even past that. They're just built like just solid rocks, and it's usually not as much maintenance as what you think it is. Most of the stuff is set up, it's automated with updates, and we just get notifications by email that, "Hey, I've been updated," or "I have not." It's, there's really not that as much as what you think there may be.
Well, it's there, it's just automatic.
A little bit, it's just.
Right, there's a lot of.
A lot of automated stuff.
That requires quite a bit of oversight, because I've been, I've had a lot of experience in cyber attacks.
Okay.
And discovered just how devastating it can be.
Yes.
So, okay, I think that answers my questions. Getting 10 megabytes per second at the Road Department for $186 a month is a bad deal, and I'm not interested in any bad deals, so.
Well, I think that also includes their phone service, too. Am I not, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
The phone and internet.
Yeah, it's been awful out there for a while, so.
And I guess not the Animal Shelter, it's pretty rough down there?
Yes, with it, I know we got point-to-point. I'm not sure how much they use it out there. That's the thing, that I don't think they use it a whole lot out there. Now, of course, the Road Department, they use it a little bit more. In the same way with solid waste, I'm not sure. They don't use it like we do, you know, day in and day out, you know, around the clock, but they do use it some out there. I think what they do have right there is working for what they need right now, but.
Ben, you have any questions for him?
I don't have any questions. Penny asked me to look over the customer service agreement with Exact. It appears to me that we can terminate that within 30 days, after a 30-day written notice is given, so, just so everybody's aware of that.
So, do you guys want to make a decision on this, or do you want to table it today? Or, you got any more questions for Larry?
And I think Larry did say he would stick around till after the meeting, if you all did have any questions as well.
Just doing some quick math, I mean, for the courthouse, it's extra $6,000 a year, right?
Yeah.
Now, we don't, I don't, I agree with Moose. I don't know why they need five phones out the Road Department.
Yeah. I think he was doing, he just went out there and asked them what they had, and I know they've got some cordless phones as well, and I think he was counting.
Yeah, we have one phone sitting in the office, got two subs on the top of the like, who knows what they said. Grabbing, grabbing, naming it up there. We thought only one hundred.
Yeah.
They get one hundred phones.
Yeah, we just need one, one service and a couple of phones.
The phones that we have now, so there's really no local control over those either, so, I mean, if I want to save somebody's saved number on my phone, we have to contact somebody at Exact to switch that over, and I knew Leslie would join in on that.
Yeah, well, like, I can't change my own recording to my office. I have to go. This summer's been fine to get with, but if I want to wake up at 4:00 a.m. on Election Day, turn that off, because I did forget one time, it was a mess.
Do you know, will these continue to do that?
So, we're going to have, we're going to have exactly what Exact gives us right now as, as that's, they're going to have our own dedicated engineering that will handle that for us from Spectrum. And they have also said that we're going to have local control at administrative level on that in addition to them doing it. So, either way you want it to go with it, you could. So, having that local control is important, in my opinion. I agree, I agree with you, Leslie, 100%, so.
And they've been fine. I mean, they're just doing their job.
Sure, they're doing their job.
When it's set up, like, me and Ben will sign contacts, and the fifth law address is reset, it's gone. Four Sundays are there, Sunday's are not. It's not Larry's fault, he's done his job, but there's a lot of wire in here that was here before Larry came in.
And it's hard to run wire in this building.
Yeah, it ain't him, it's just been here.
Okay.
I'm all for Ben, I would, I'm recording on call, trying to get the same number.
So, would you all like to table this and think it over and learn more about it, or do you want to vote on this? Okay.
I'd like to study on it.
Yeah.
I mean, it ain't, it ain't got to be, you know, four weeks. I mean, my gut tells me I'm leaning toward, right, seven grand a year is what it adds to the budget, you know? But just out of, just being able to study on your document there a little bit, whatever, like the table for one month.
Okay.
Circle back to, it's my motion.
Okay, you got a second?
I'll say.
Joey, Woody, Joey, any further discussion? Clerk Carl Rowe.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Okay. Next is, next is discussion of, thank you, Larry. Appreciate you coming and talking to us about it. Discussion of Red Cross donation. I know last year we gave them $1,000, and Dennis has had two fires here recently, and they've, they've really come through for these families.
I think we've done over, I think over $3,000 for Red Cross, and we're, that's about $2,000 partial. They've been pre-acted, they've been, they've, they don't provide us force field of attention on them, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for a $1,000 donation.
Okay, Mark.
Given, you know, in the, in the event of a catastrophic event, we're going to, we're going to need them.
Absolutely. Okay, Mark and Joey, any further discussion?
I'm just wanting to know what, what was it beforehand? You know what I'm saying?
We hadn't been given them any money.
Last year.
Last year was the first year we gave them money.
Yeah, yeah.
And they haven't actually come to us, I think it was about a year ago, wasn't it, Penny? We figured they're coming anytime, and since they've had these fires and they've donated, we went ahead and put it on here. So, thank you all for making that motion. Any further discussion on it? Clerk Carl Rowe.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
They also provide smoke detectors. I think we've gotten almost eighty the past year.
Yeah. They've been really good partners for us, and that's, that's good to have, and they'll appreciate this as well. And thank you, Dennis. I know he goes when we have a fire, and he works with the Red Cross and Salvation Army, and I appreciate him doing that, and gets in touch with them and gets these people help right away. So, next is discussion of radios for 911 Dispatch Center. Dennis, did you want to comment on that?
We need, for an ambulance service, we're going to have to have radios, I think we've got the easiest and quickest way to do that, the Sheriff's Department's got some radios, but hopefully they can answer, let us, so three guns, and that's, I don't need anything in this area. Really, the problem that we're talking, getting someone with a call log in the ambulance system, and we might have to program that, because that'd be the quickest way to do that. Looking at, the county fire system is going to be going with different radios within probably the next year, and give, they would allow us to add the channels to that system at some point in the future, that's right, I don't have to know when they're looking at ambulance. I think the kind of issue towards maybe, maybe Summer maybe, possibly. That will allow the ambulances then be, be able to, everyone else can be, have the radios, who will, that's what's called, the fire system. We don't have any, any crisis practices on that.
So, are we asking for anything from the court today to make these ambulances be able to communicate, other than we just need to have them put the radio, they need to have somebody install the radios, and then do?
I think installation, and just guessing, I would say $200 a year, I've got some radios, so probably $1,000 would be ready, and use the system, and, and.
Yeah. So, I think the ambulance board is probably planning on funding, getting them put in, right? Okay. Okay, so really, we're, and we've got capabilities to talk to them at Dispatch Now, so we're good on that, right?
Excuse me, thank you, but we're using communication.
Okay. All right, so really, we don't need to take no action on that, do we? We're not asking for anything. All right.
I guess one question. That, that is, that is an analog system, right? Okay.
Yes, it's the old system, the Sheriff's Department used, won't, won't be utilizing the radios, and the party that's in place, we're using that.
Okay. I know, I realize it's not us, it's the ambulance board, but obviously, we wouldn't want to make any significant investments in an analog system, as it's, it is going away, so.
Yeah.
When we, when we are ready to, if the county fire board is ready to do that, what is the cost of that, what would be, manual support, I think, they, they would, they have.
Yeah. So, this gets us started without them having to be more stressed than what they're already going to be.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. Lewis County Sheriff Johnny Bivens' monthly activity report.
I didn't get one.
I got one, yeah. It's not a search, I mean.
Did anybody else get one? Okay.
I'm going to miss this one.
No questions, we'll move on to the Lewis County Treasurer, Penny Lee's treasurer's report.
I've submitted for it, let me know if you have any question. You will see on the special funds, on the opioid, I see that CD amount is in there, but it is already trans, over, transferred over into the CD account, so.
So, we put, put the full amount in?
Yes, we did, put the full amount in.
And then the interest is going right back into it?
Yes, that is correct, yes. Yep.
Make a motion to pre the treasurer's report.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay. Woody, Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Carl Rowe.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Lewis County Road Supervisor David Goodwin, monthly report.
I know you've told me this before, what's the delivery date expected on the backhoe? Is that this spring? Okay. We did get a notification from the transportation that we're going to get about $75,000 for, most of that, I think about 50 was for Rybelle, or for Pine Valley Road, and part of it was for Rybelle Depris Road, right? And, and then we also, David, put together several other roads, and we went ahead and submitted those, and we did get notification that they had received them. So, they'll be looking at them. Hopefully, we'll get some more roads. And thanks, David, for working on getting those ready. I know it was short notice, but there is some changes that they're looking at the legislator approving the roads, and that, and taking it away from the executive branch.
So, the, so the list for the next round has been submitted for blacktopping? Is that what you're referring to?
We listed.
Was that discretionary?
Yeah, for discretionary.
Can we get a copy of what actually was the final product? I know you'd asked us for some feedback and whatnot, but can we see actually what was the final product then?
Yeah.
I can send you all an email if you would like.
Yeah.
And I can also email this Spectrum if you all would like as well, if that's easy.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we're hoping that, hopeful that we'll get some more discretionary funding. All right. Thank you, David. Next, Lewis County Animal Control, Billy McClurg, he's, Billy's been very busy, and a lot going on out there every day at the Animal Shelter. Okay. Lewis County Emergency Management Director Dennis Brown.
I've submitted a written report, and if you'd like to answer questions, I'd also like to mention, if you remember about a year ago, I had written for a grant in Bridge, $10,000, we received that. I brought one of these over today, we started distributing them. This is one of thirty many kits that we're providing to the department, as well as the Sheriff's Department, who are, who are helping the department, responsible for medical health, or a great accident, or a vaccine, or COVID, on our, in, in, in addition to these thirty many kits, we've got eight of these, we'll be getting, and, 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 and as well, and, 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 and.
I know we have AEDs around the courthouse here. Is there any, out of the Road Department? Is there any AEDs?
Is there any AED out there? Is there an AED out there at the road department?
There's none.
I mean, I'm just thinking we're, a group of county employees.
Justice Center's got theirs over there and we got ours here, but I don't think there's any out to the road department. You guys got your first aid?
There's not one out there. Yeah.
I mean, there's several employees there regularly.
Yeah. We have updated like last year, you know, we did the eyewash station, we got their fire extinguishers updated, got first aid kit out there. So we've done a few things like that, but that is a good idea and, yeah. And he's got a first aid kit in his vehicle right now, so. I know Dennis has been taking a lot of training and, you know, we talked the other day about doing a tabletop exercise here, probably in May, wasn't it? And we'll try to do that and doing a lot of good preparing this stuff and appreciate that. All right, next are Roger Lewis, solid waste coordinator. Roger's been busy learning his new role as solid waste coordinator. It's keeping him quite busy. He said if you've got any tough questions, he would like to answer them at this time. No, we appreciate Roger, he's going to do a great job getting our county cleaned up. We're excited about that. Okay, thank you Roger. And Lewis County 911 Director, got a report on that if you have any questions? Okay. Next is approval of the claims for all county funds as presented to the fiscal court.
I'll make a motion to approve claims.
Second.
Okay, Mark and Woody, any further discussions? Clerk Carl Row.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn. Judge Sparks.
Yes. Number 11, approval of transfers for all county funds as presented to the fiscal court.
Make the motion.
Okay, Woody? Joey? Any further discussion? Clerk Carl Row.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussions?
Judge, I've sent several emails requesting some additional or an update from Spectrum Charter regarding the progress. I know that there was a phone call that they said that they would provide us a list. Have we received anything on that? I know I've sent a couple of emails and not gotten anything back on them.
No, we haven't, we haven't got an email on that. I asked Ben Ucelis the other day and I never really got a straight answer if he's going to send that or not. But I will say, I did ask him about considering the ARC grant that we got, consider them taking that over. And of course he wants to know the details of that, so I've talked to Kristy Dodge or I messaged her and asked her if she would send him the information on that. And I actually talked to him about that to see if they would possibly take it over. My request was that they take the grant, use it for construction and then put up the 200,000 match instead of our funds to do that.
I guess that list, I mean, I know we're getting a lot of questions, I know I am regarding that service, Joey's getting some too. And we haven't received any, really any new information from them and $17 million out there, it would be good to get some update and be able to provide some information to the public about what to expect.
My understanding is they're moving well on phase one of this and, you know, we met with Buffalo Trace the other day, part of our broadband committee did it Superintendent's Office and Magister Underwood was there and we are looking at that map and we're going to look at it really close and try to do some, run some tests to see if the map is accurate as far as underserved. Let's see those numbers. My question is, is, you know, has what qualifies someone being underserved, if that's changed over the last four or five years? Since the map was put together in the first place. But there is more funding out there even beyond this here spec and we need to know who's underserved in order to be able to figure out what we can apply for the bead funding for.
If we could be provided those addresses that they have, I know each of us could look at and review our district and look at the last house on a particular roadway or something like that and provide some potentially valuable feedback to them.
I will try to go, you know, me and Kristy Dodge will try to get those addresses for us if we can, we'll continue to try.
I appreciate that.
I can't promise you, but we'll continue to try getting those for us and if we do, we'll provide them to all four of you. Anything else? Okay, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mark.
Second.
Johnny. Any other discussion? Clerk Carl Row.
Mark Horstley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann. Woody Underwood.
Yes.